Good evening, everyone. We are now having the City Council Subcommittee Meeting Conference will be held on Wednesday, June 1st at 6:00 PM. City Council Chambers, the following subject matter will be discussed. To discuss the job posting for clerk position, officials invited to attend Subcommittee meeting, all honorable members of the City Council, City Solicitor Cheryl Ann Watson Fisher, Human Resources Director Eddie Els, all members of the public. A communication was sent earlier about, to the City Council on the reading of the actually weekly reports from, I'm sorry, before I start, the clerk recall roll.
Councilor Cooperrow.
Here.
Councilor Tenere Garcia, Councilor Robinson, Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez, Councilor Vega Maldonado, Councilor Donada.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Vido.
Present.
Councilor DeJesus and Councilor Judy Garcia.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, members present.
Okay. So, a communication was sent earlier by myself as a member of the Subcommittee, Special Subcommittee on the City Clerk, Chelsea City Council Clerk, rather, to state to the all members of the City Council that the subgroup had worked on with the Human Resources Director and our present City Council Clerk on the job description. A copy of the job description was provided to all members of the City Council. We are now here to discuss and take feedback from members of the Council as to the position as it was put together, and I'll quickly read over it. It is clerk to City Council, part-time, twenty hours per week. It's a salary grade to MM4, salary range thirty thousand, four hundred nine and sixty cents to thirty-seven, nine hundred eighty and eighty cents. Hourly range, twenty-nine dollars, twenty-four cents to thirty-six, fifty-two. This was, again, the input on this range, the salary range, was provided by in consultation with our Human Resources Director Eddie Els. The summary of the position, as stated, is under the direction of City Council President, provide advice and opinions to the City Council on legislative process and related procedures. The clerk contributes to the preparation and efficiency of the City Council meetings and ensures overall parliamentary procedures are carried out in a timely manner. Also provides clerical assistance to the members of the City Council and performs related work as required. Performs a variety of complex confidential clerical duties, requiring a thorough knowledge of organizational procedures and precedents and municipal budgetary requirements. This position requires ability to work independently, exercising impartial judgment, discretion and initiative. This position requires an understanding of the Chelsea City Council and its members' obligations under mass general laws, ordinances of the Chelsea, ordinances of Chelsea, rather, and rules of the City Council. Qualifications were listed. Associate's degree or higher or equivalent years of work experience and education. Minimum five years related experience in the public sector and municipal environments are preferred. Working knowledge of Robert's Rules of Order and/or parliamentary procedure required. Registered Politician, desirable. Chelsea residency preferred. And then, under the skills and knowledge abilities, we had in-depth knowledge of parliamentary procedure, mass general laws, city ordinances, related to the legislative process at the local and state level will be required. The ability to advise and read on Robert's Rules, applicable local and state open meeting laws, Code of Conduct Regulations and the Charter of the City of Chelsea. We also asked that there be a proficiency in Microsoft Office, including Word, Excel and PowerPoint. The ability to perform in various databases is needed with accuracy and proficiency. Excellent oral and written communication skills, proficient analytical and problem-solving skills would be helpful. Ability to proofread and perform statistical and record-keeping duties, ability to interpret policies, laws, ordinances, rules and regulations. Communicate effective with all segments of the community in a tactful and courteous manner. Bilingual, English, Spanish, preferred. Must be flexible and have ability to attend council and Subcommittee meetings during the evening. Supervisory role of one employee. Then we listed essential job functions and duties. Assistant the agenda preparation, gather information and contact meeting participants, maintain appointment schedules and calendars and arrange meetings as directed, conduct research, proofreading and assistant drafting council orders, emails and letters, screen and receive telephone calls and redirect when appropriate, perform routine budget payroll and purchasing duties for the City Council office, monitor office supplies and order supplies as needed while ensuring the most cost-effective orders, maintain electronic and paper records, ensuring information is organized and easily accessible, track pending legislation and financial orders, research, compile, analyze data for special projects and prepare presentations or reports as assigned, serve as a liaison between the City Council and the city staff, nonprofits, constituents and state officials, and respond to inquiries, informational requests and complaints from the general public in a timely fashion. The asterisk from the previous post of the salary was based on twenty weeks, and we asked that qualified candidates submit resumes to Broadway here at jobschelseacma.gov. Again, this was a position, or rather, a draft of the posting that was worked on between the Subcommittee, input from some of the councilors, also primarily our City Clerk, Chelsea City Council Clerk, who provided us with a lot of this information and role, and our information from Eddie Els. The purpose of this meeting tonight is just to gather some feedback from our colleagues in the Council, to see as they've, if they've done their homework, read this job posting, and see if they have any questions, concerns prior to the Subcommittee directing Eddie Els to post this and begin to receive resumes. So, at this time, I'll ask my colleagues that are not on the Subcommittee if they have any questions concerning the description as it was provided to us here.
Do we have any questions?
About the description here.
Okay. That's the one here, right? Skills, knowledge and abilities?
Yes.
All right. Over here, right?
Please speak into the microphone. Don't raise it above speaking to it. Thank you.
I got it, then I got to lower my voice. So, in this part here, there's something that says bilingual, English and Spanish preferred. So, if somebody is qualified and does not speak Spanish, they would be discriminated against? I know it says preferred, which means it's not required. I understand that. But what if you don't speak Spanish? What if you just speak English, but you're qualified to do the job? So, would that person get something against them because he does not speak Spanish? Or, what would it be? So, if you had two people that are both qualified, have the same qualification, except one speaks Spanish and one doesn't, if you were the, what would be the choice? So, in other words, they both have the same amount?
I think you're repeating yourself at this point.
Huh?
I think you're repeating your point at this point.
I know I'm repeating.
So, so the question is, would there be a preference?
Okay.
I guess the question is, because...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. This, this earpiece is over here in my, my head.
Okay.
Okay. I got to learn to adjust this thing, so I can hear what you're saying. So, I won't repeat myself all over again, because when you're talking into the mic, it sounds in my head like, it goes twice. So, I got to adjust myself to it.
So, my response...
That's one thing.
So, I'll respond to that first. I think that, that's a question that all the councilors would have to respond as to how they would feel when they see two candidates in front, because, again, the whole council is going to vote yes or no. So, individually, if you see a candidate in front of you, and both of them are equal in all aspects, except one has the ability to speak Spanish, then I would say your individual councilors will have to make that decision of who they would vote for. So, it's not me, or individually, but it's a vote on the council. So, ask yourself.
I get what you're saying. It's like, all, like, all of us have to make your own choice, more or less, what you prefer, what is your thing? I just brought that up because it's kind of, I know it says preferred. Preferred doesn't mean it's a requirement.
That's correct.
I understand that. Okay, here's another one in the bottom. Which it says, that, that's something that's kind of interesting, right? Five years related experience, public sector, and you have to be versed in Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure required. So, or you need a two-years degree or equivalent. That, that part, so, what are we looking for? We're looking for a person that's educated, and one which you got, you need to have, and someone also that is versed within the City Council practice. What if somebody doesn't have any knowledge of the City Council works, or he doesn't fit the bill?
I would say that he probably, that individual probably won't meet the criteria that the City Council's looking for.
All right.
That's me speaking. I can't speak for everybody, but...
So, that means, let's say, someone like, I quit, right? And I want to do it. Someone like, let's say, someone that has the experience, was a counselor for, let's say, five, six, seven years, whatever it is, right? Would that make him qualified?
Possibly.
All right. All right. And then, you're not, in the back, right? There's one part here that's interesting, too. Serve a liaison between City Council, city staff, nonprofits, constituents and state officials. What do you mean, nonprofits? What is that? We'll talk to, what, nonprofits?
Talk to all the stakeholders within the community. Could be anybody.
I know, I know, I know what that, but I'm saying, do, like, nonprofit constituents is, and state officials, isn't that what he's supposed to do anyways? Ask anybody that asks any questions of him? Yeah, no, anybody. It doesn't specifically have to be to, that, that thing should be to anybody that wishes to speak to him. He should be able to talk to anybody. Shouldn't have one particular criteria, says nonprofits, constituents and state officials. That's what he's supposed to do anyways.
That's why it's stated. That's why it's stated.
I understand. Huh? Yeah, I know, I know, I know. But I'm saying, it should have just said, everybody, anybody that wants to talk to him. He shouldn't specifically put...
Serve as a liaison to everybody, at least, you know, we, we named it out.
Yeah. I get it. But that's the part that, you know, it should be, everybody should be, should be a liaison to anybody. Anybody could come up, it could be anybody off the street, and he wants to talk to him, he should be able to talk to him. Not because, you know, I'm...
Do you have any questions? Any other questions?
Yeah. Twenty hours a week, what's that entitled him to? Benefits, right? Because, in twenty hours and up, you get benefits. Under twenty hours, you don't get benefits, right?
Correct.
So, it's really a part-time, full-time. Because part-time, you'd be under twenty hours and you're not entitled to the benefits. Twenty hours, it's considered a part-time, but it's really not, because you're entitled to the benefits. So, it's actually, not really a part-time. It's part-time for hours.
It is a part-time position.
Huh?
It's a part-time position.
Right, but it should be stated, a part-time position with regular benefits. Because, you know, some part-times don't get the benefits as regular positions.
Okay.
Wait. So, it does, there are benefits?
Yes.
With the part-time, the part-time position?
It should be twenty hours a week.
Oh, that's great.
Councilor Taylor, you made an expression early. You want to say something?
I, I just want to actually follow up on something he said. If, if, is the, is the benefits part going to be posted in the actual posting? No?
We don't, generally don't.
Well, that, you generally don't do that.
Generally don't.
Would that make a difference? I mean, are people gonna, I mean, I mean, I don't know, you know...
Speak into the mic, please.
It just, you know, far be it from me to tell the city what to do, but it, it just seems like that might make a difference whether somebody decides that they want to apply or not. So, I mean, but that would go for all the jobs, so if we don't, if we don't have any problem filling the jobs with qualified candidates, I don't know. But then again, we, we do, we do issue a lot of waivers, so, you know, I don't know if that's related or not. It's just an observation. I'm not, you know, I just think that if you're advertising a job, you know...
You have any concerns about the Spanish preference?
Well, I, I, you know, it's, to me, it's like, I think the more knowledge someone has, the better, but I don't think that we ought to put, you know, it's, I don't think it should be a make or break thing. We have plenty of people in City Hall that speak Spanish. We have somebody with administrative assistant on staff that speaks Spanish. If somebody needs a Spanish translation, I think that would be adequate. But I do think that if it come, you know, all things being equal, and one person speaks it and one person doesn't, I think that could be a deciding factor, but, you know, that's just my opinion.
Any other questions? About the posting? Councilor Brown?
Mr. President, I just, you know, we put a lot of time in it, a lot of meetings. We did look at this, what we're discussing, and it's relevant. You know, it's, as Councilor Taylor stated, that if, you know, both sides were equal and the best applicant, then we can take the best applicant. I don't think we should dwell on that. I just do want us to recognize that the position, since Paul has taken this position years ago, I won't tell his age, but it's become extremely technical and a desired position of folks with the knowledge and not the, you know, I want to learn on the job as I go along. I know each and every one of us, and future council members, we come with different attitudes, different, you know, characters, and we want things done right away, and the folks that we're looking to hire have to have some understanding of setting of doing those type of responsibilities for multi-individuals. You know, I believe, and I said this in the meeting, that most of the candidates or folks that's going to be interested will be knowledgeable folks that's involved in this type of setting, have some experience and will be, you know, added to our mix here. But, you know, whether it's Spanish or English, Paul's been here for many years and he hasn't spoken Spanish, and we still got the work done. If we can get someone here to speak Spanish and they're just as good as the person that doesn't speak Spanish, we can, you know, it's up to the council to make that decision. Keep in mind, we also have a very intelligent young lady here to speak fluently in Spanish, and she will be his, his or her assistants also. So, I don't want to really dwell on the language. We just trying to get a really good candidate, someone wants to come in, know the job and try to meet the qualifications that we've defined in the, you know, in the position, position.
Councilor Vido?
Couple of comments. I, I think, I think it's, it's fine. I mean, the preferred, someone that speaks Spanish, that would be great. If not, then it's not, it's preferred. I think the, the preference part that bothers me is the Chelsea residency aspect. I, I would really want them to be a Chelsea resident. Also, piggybacking on what my brother councillor said in terms of, I understand that we don't advertise the benefit aspect of it, but I'm assuming that if this is a part-time position and some, we want someone that's well-versed in parliamentary procedure, that is probably going to be an elder, someone that's older with more experience, and I would think that it would matter to them to know that there are benefits that come along with the twenty-hour position. The other thing is, I don't understand the beginning part. It says, "Under the direction of the City Council President, provide advice and opinions to the City Council." It sounds almost like they're, like, the City Council President's assistant, where I don't, I don't, that, the wording there just doesn't sit well with me, because the City Clerk doesn't work for the City Council President, it works for the entire council. So, I'm just trying to understand what that sentence is supposed to mean.
Is the letter "the" in the direction of the City Council, but it comes, provide advice and opinions to the City Council on... I think that basically the City Council Office is under the direction of whoever is the City Council President, but is, that changes, and...
Yeah, but the way it reads, it says, "Under the direction of the City Council President, they will then provide advice to us," where the only person that I would want as a City Council member to be guiding or directing the City Clerk would be the City Solicitor. It's just to make sure that we're, you know, following the law.
So, it could be slash the word president and just say, "Under the direction of the City Council."
I mean, yeah, I just, just the wording of it just sounds a little off.
That's fine by me. I, you know, again...
Collectively, it's you, because I think that's the only reason we made that.
I, yeah.
Not you, you.
I, you tell it as the City Council President, yeah.
The body.
But, that's, that's technically the, the, the way it goes. Under the direction of the City Council President is basically the person who works with the City Clerk on setting all the meetings, you know, and, and the agenda, so to speak. So, it kind of, that is the person who is there taking direction under. It doesn't mean that they're not getting advice or they're not working with the other councilors.
Yeah, but the, the sentence goes on. It's, I got, I can understand that part. Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, what would, I mean, again, I can change, I, what, do you have a suggestion and amendment?
I wasn't prepared to...
Do you just go, "Under the direction of the Council"?
Take that.
Again...
Under the direction of the City Council?
City Council, yeah.
But, it's the rest of the sentence, right? Provide advice and opinions to City, you know...
What he does.
It could be they report to the City Council President, that's fine. It could be that they work for the City Council, but the...
That's not, that kind of sounds like the President would direct him to do this.
Exactly.
Instead of, instead of, I know what you're, I, I know what you're saying, and it, and that's, that's, I think that that's also correct, but I don't know if there's another way to, to...
I think, I think if I could say, I think what I was trying to say a moment ago, and I'm quite tired here, that we have twelve personalities, and we all go to Paul at some point and we ask for an opinion and do something. So, we're trying to get that and keep some unity in order, because the President usually has the floor, so, you know...
Yeah, nobody, yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not, I get that. They report to the City Council President, they work with the City Council President to create the agenda.
Yeah.
But the way it reads, councillor, is, "Under the direction of the City Council President, we will then, I will be doing his work and telling you what to do, because that's what the President said." I'm not denying the fact that the...
Right. But, but I understand that.
Correct.
That's why if I was going to finish, allowed to finish, it's, if we could just do the City Council, if we do the City Council, it still include us all, but when the City Council President, whoever he or she is, have to do something to report back to the City Council, it should be their person's responsibility.
Are you finished?
Yes.
You still didn't capture what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the way it reads is that the City Council, the person, "Under the direction of the City Council President," will then tell the rest of the body what to do. No one is denying the fact that the clerk...
We deleted that already.
No one is denying the fact that the clerk reports to the City Council President, one thousand percent, that's the way it works. But when, but if they're providing advice and opinions to the City Council, it should be independent, autonomously, away from what the City, the role of the City Council President. It could be two separate sentences here. They direct to the City Council President, they report to him, and they will provide advice. The wording just sounds off.
But that's why we deleted the President.
Or we say, how about, how about, "Under the direction of the City Council President, comma, the clerk will contribute to the preparation of the efficiency of City Council meetings and ensures overall parliamentary procedures are carried out in a timely manner." We could say, "The clerk would also provide advice and opinions to the City Council on legislative process and related procedures." We can split it...
You see what, yeah.
So that, so that it's two different sentences, because, "Under the direction of the President," they are putting together the agenda, the calendar and so forth, but separately, the clerk is also providing advice and opinions to the City Council.
Exactly.
Then that, that captures basically, that solves it. Okay.
This is all kind of nitpicking, but...
It is. But it works, so that's why we're here.
Earlier, I said about the Spanish thing, let me clarify what I meant by that, because there's plenty of Spanish people that don't speak Spanish. My children are one of them. Some of them cannot speak Spanish. That's the only reason why I brought that up, because we don't want to make a priority that that's what they have to do, because there's plenty of Spanish people that do not speak Spanish. That's the only reason why I brought that up, because the more knowledge you have of languages, the better it'd be for all of us, if you can understand more. But I wanted to make sure, to clarify that there's plenty of Spanish people that do not speak Spanish.
Understood. So, aside from the, the change in the, the paragraph on the front, is there any other questions, amendments, proposed changes or concerns raised on the...
I have additional questions. The pay, is it, is it comparable to what it is now?
Yes.
Yeah. And it...
Well, it's the same pay range that Mr. Casino's in currently. Pay grade, I should say.
And it's still a, it's a twenty-hour position for you as well?
Yes. Well, that, that was, that last meeting, it was twenty hours worth.
Say that again?
At the last meeting, twenty hours was determined to be the right amount of time based upon input from Mr. Casino in terms of the time he spends.
Okay.
And also, what's not here that what we expect the applicant or whoever being interviewed for, to understand that there's times that on a Monday night when we have City Council meetings, there'll be a lot of work to do, a lot of time expected of them, and when we have the Subcommittee...
And budget.
Minutes and meetings where the clerk has to take minutes, that'd be a responsibility. So, we, we anticipate that we all understand that, you know, Monday through Friday could be, you know, eighteen hours, and Monday night and City Council Subcommittee doing budget turn, time could be, you know, twenty hours, so...
And then there's going to be those weeks that we don't have meetings, or months like June, July, that, you know, it averages out the hours altogether over all the year.
So, why don't we give him a raise? Make him more money. If we, you got the twenty hours plus the time that they come, you know, they come all during the weekend, during the week, spend two, three hours here and there, right? So, what don't we do, like we do? Here, I got a good idea. Can we turn around the hours that he uses that are extra besides his normal hours? One day a week, he would take less time. Instead of coming in to work four hours, one day, he would take two hours.
On Friday, he'd be twelve, less time.
But everybody leaves on Friday at twelve. That's, that's not the endeavor. What I'm saying is, all the hours this person will do, extra, he doesn't get paid for. It's just part of his job. So, why don't we turn around and give him something, an incentive, like...
Yeah, you just missed that.
That's what he said. That's what the President just said.
They don't work at all, right? And they're weekly, totally, sort of balances out.
Okay, so I guess...
It's a good pay, Councilor Cooperrow, it's great.
I was just thinking that it, you know, maybe it would be something more incentive for someone to, you know what I mean, to know that there's little extra involved in your, you know...
They get the pleasure of working with us. What's better than that?
Ah! That's good. That's, that's a good, that's enough, I guess, huh?
Any comments?
No, the only comment I would make is, being an hourly employee, which this is, if someone were to work twenty-two hours in a week, they'd be paid for twenty-two hours that week. So, there won't be any excess time left on the table.
So, this is an hour? This is actually an hour?
Yes.
Oh, so, so if he works twenty-five hours, he'll get twenty-five hours if he get, but does that mean that he's required to only work fifteen hours the next week?
No.
Okay. So, it's just a, this is, okay. Because I thought this was basically a, like a halftime salary which comes out to that hour.
Right, right, no.
So, so...
That's an hourly rate.
So, they get paid different every week, not, not...
Well, they'll come in status of twenty hours, and if it's twenty hours, it's twenty hours.
Sorry, sorry, well, can you repeat that?
They'll be status at twenty hours. That'll be their regular hours.
There's, it seems to be a dispute here by our City Council Clerk about how he gets paid, so, would you like to clarify that, Paul?
I have very flexible hours, and the council goes along with it, that I adjust my hours not to exceed twenty. So, if I put in like, three hours in the morning and five hours at night, you know, in the long, especially we just had the meetings, so that would be an eight-hour day. The next day, I probably will work two hours. I'll adjust it, but I don't get paid hourly, even though you have an hourly rate there for twenty-hour breakdown. I don't get paid hourly.
So, always when you've worked more than twenty hours, you haven't gotten paid over that?
No.
He'll just, he just adjusts his hours the next week.
Yeah.
I adjust them, and like Roy said, in the summertime, you can make up hours there too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's only because you only submit twenty hours.
Right.
Is that, it's not an automatic twenty hours, no matter how...
Yeah, you submit twenty on the payroll sheets to come out?
That's all we, yeah, I never go over.
That's why. So that's why, okay. That's, that's all I need.
But if I could say also, because we listened to him when we first started the meeting, it's because he adjusts his hours, like he just said. Knowing that we have budget here, and he will work a lot of hours and get everything that we need to have done, done. And knowing on Wednesday, where we didn't have a meeting scheduled, and the work needs to be done on Friday, he can come and do the four hours. So anyone comes in here, they know that the hours are somewhat flexible on nights that we have budget here, and normally we get, in the subcommittees, we get an hour and a half tops. But if we have budgets the last few nights, we were going up until eleven o'clock. So those folks that's going to apply for these jobs, they're pretty much like you and I when we run for office. We know what we're getting into.
And all of this raises a very important point here. And that is that, you know, Paul's a very honest guy, who, you know, comes in the hours he's supposed to. You know, none of us are here all the time. And so when you hire someone who's basically monitoring themselves, could lead to someone, you know, playing... So, so, of course, you know, the balance of all that is, then you have the other person who's working with them. And if, let's say Fatima is noticing that whoever we get isn't pulling their hours, that may raise a situation where, geez, do I, you know, do I tell on the person, you know, to the council that the person I'm working with isn't logging in the hours it's supposed to, and so forth? I mean, we don't have a way to do this logging on, checking in, and so forth. But he, you know, basically, he logs on, and he provides the hours. He just goes to Eddie, and he says, "This is, I'm logging in for twenty hours." But, you know, there's a, there's a trust there that he is pulling those hours, whatever it may be.
Is there something new at, that the city is working on where we submit the hours, all the workers?
Online?
Is there a new method of submitting coming up?
New method of submitting, not by worker, but by manager and department. It's several months...
Is it the city working on a new program?
It's a bit off, yeah. It's an upgrade of the MUNA system.
They're working on something.
But that, in, in our case, um, in our case, his manager, who would be punching, logging in their hours?
The president.
Huh?
The city council president.
Would it be the city council president who's logging in their hours, or he logs his own?
You could delegate it to the clerk.
I delegate that to the, to the city clerk. So I would tell...
Council clerk.
Oh, so, I'm sorry. He logs himself in, and he provides his own hours. I don't have to sign off on anything. Or, the future president won't have to sign...
Do you now?
Nope.
Paul, you signed the payroll for the team.
I signed the payroll, right.
Right.
So he signs himself. So whoever is signing thems, yeah, so again, once again, whoever's in this position would have to sign their own hours. Do who, we going, yeah, again, we're, they're self-monitoring. We have, we have confidence that this gentleman, right here...
Or, or lady.
Or lady, whatever, yep, you know. He or him, or they, um, could, you know, they're going to fill in their own hours, and we're going to have confidence. But let's be honest, guys, you know, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be here when the hours count, you know? So if they're not here during the other hours, well, then they're neither here nor there. But the job will have to get done. And if we start to see, if any, if a future council sees any of the wheels falling off, and jobs not getting done, then it's up to them to address it.
So theoretically, you will go in and make sure that he doesn't do forty hours straight every week?
All of you will be going in and bringing coffee to the new clerk, and talking to them, and saying, "Hey, what's going on?" And saying, "I need help writing an order." And so forth, and so forth.
Question, that's, that's just kind of, is there some sort of impediment that the city has in, in paying a half-time salary? And having it based on salary and not on hourly? Is there some sort of reason why you couldn't do that? Or it's just that that's the way it's done, and...
I'm not aware that there's any impediment. I'm not so sure if we have a choice.
So I, I just think that that solves that whole issue, if it's on, if it's a salary basis.
Again, I'm not sure why or how we set up it's, you know, it's always been that way. It doesn't mean that we can't change it, but there are a lot of other positions that are salary, and not, it's like, you know, senior staff is all salary. You're a salary, you're not paid by the hour. So the question is... So my question to, for you to ask, city manager and payroll and such is, what prohibits this position from being a salary position versus being a salary, an hourly? If you can ask that, that way we avoid the whole... And just say, "It's a part-time job, it's not counted on hours." We would take out the hours, we won't have to worry about benefits, which is like, look, it's a part-time...
You don't have to worry about people, you know...
Yeah. So can we tran, can we transition into this being just a salaried position without hours? That, again, would probably eliminate this being any sort of possible union job setup.
That's what I'm asking, because it seems like it's a pretty simple solution to head off any potential problems that you just raised. So, you know, I didn't know if there was any particular reason why they chose to, to put it down as an hourly and, as, as opposed to a salary. If it were me, I would absolutely do salary, because it makes more sense, it's easier, there's no, you know... And people self-regulate, like you said. I mean, it is what it is, they're not going to get any more, and...
All right, we'll get some feedback from Ed on that one, on the question of, you know, if that's possible. And we'll change the, the paragraph, the opening paragraph, a little bit.
Yeah, I'll get that from you.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Robinson?
What are the benefits that are going to kick in?
When will the benefits?
What are the benefits?
What are the benefits?
They'll have access to our health insurance, life, dental, if they want. And some payday time off. They'll be eligible for it if they want it or need it. We have a voluntary life insurance program where fifty percent of the premium is picked up by the city.
So the benefits are the same as a regular employee?
Please, please speak into the microphone, sir.
Correct.
So the benefits are the same as a regular employee with just less hours? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, simple.
Does the city have, like, if someone doesn't want to participate in the benefits package, does the city have, like, this mechanism where someone gets, like, a fee?
There is a program like that, but you have to be, to be eligible, you have to be for at least four to five years initially to establish the fact that you were taking health insurance benefits. And then for whatever reason, you stopped, and you therefore saved the city money, and you got a stipend. But it's not, wouldn't really apply here.
Questions? None? Okay, well, thank you very much, Eddie. We'll, we'll try to make the adjustments to this, answer some questions on the salary versus hourly, and also make the changes as provided or requested by Councilor Vito on the opening paragraph.